Well, I'd like to welcome you to the September 26, 2011 City of Thousand Oaks Planning Commission Meeting. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will the Secretary please call roll? Here.
Commissioner Price?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
There.
Commissioner Turpale?
Here.
Chair Fisher?
Here.
Public comments. Members of the public are invited to address the Commission on issues that are within the Commission's purview and not on the agenda. I don't have any public comments other than for the two cases tonight. Written comments, announcements, continuances. Mr. Town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There were two supplemental packets for this evening. It sounds like a lot of material, but in fact, it really just involves two pieces of information. One was a map which identifies parcels within the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan area by location, and a copy of that map is behind the staff dais. And, of course, that has to do with your second item tonight. And then another supplemental was sent out this afternoon with one comment letter which actually was received back in 2009 when the draft plan was first submitted to the city, and that is provided as well to the Commission for its information. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Will the clerk please call case 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding case LTP 2011-70262. Applicant Conejo Crest, request to allow the removal of a landmark tree in association with the construction of eight single-family dwellings. Location: northeast corner of Conejo School Road and Hillcrest Drive.
Ms. Young, good evening.
Good evening, Chair Fisher, members of the Planning Commission. This project was continued from two weeks ago so that the applicant could gain more information about availability of walnut trees and whether the tree could be transplanted. As you can see on the screen, this is the subject walnut tree. This project involves the proposed removal of one Southern California black walnut tree which is located on a slope in the future front yard of residential Lot 8. This was the approved site plan, and, well, actually, the site plan shows a tree 13 feet away, and this was the grading plan that was approved. It's actually eight and a half feet closer to the house. This is the subject tree. And the applicant looked at whether the tree could be transplanted and the availability of replacement walnut trees. The applicant had two companies evaluate the feasibility of transplanting the tree, and both of them recommended that this species is very difficult to transplant, and they don't have a high survival rate, and that they wouldn't guarantee the health of the tree. They also found that there were 15-gallon and 5-gallon native walnut trees available at local nurseries, and therefore that they can comply with the mitigation measure of six 15-gallon walnut trees to replace the one to be removed. Therefore, the recommendation is to approve LTP 2011-70262 in order to allow the removal of the tree based on the findings and conditions contained in the staff report. That concludes my remarks.
Questions of staff? No questions? Okay. We will go to our applicant, Mr. James Dean. I also have Mr. Keshmishian. Mr. Dean, is he part of your presentation?
Yes.
Please state your name, city of residence for the record.
Zara Keshmishian, Thousand Oaks. Basically, we agree with the staff, and we did find 15 gallons in San Diego, and we found some 5 gallons in Somus. So, we agree with the staff, and I think it would be risky to transplant the tree.
Questions of the applicant? No questions? Thank you very much. Mr. Dean?
Questions only.
Questions only? Any questions, Mr. Dean? Okay. I don't have any public comment cards, so we'll go back to staff for anything else.
No other comments.
Okay. Close of public hearing, open for Commission discussion motion. Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. I was very pleased to see the staff report and that 15-gallon trees were found, so with that, I will move approval of LTP 2011-70262, and that's with staff recommendation of removing the walnut tree and replacing with the 15-gallon trees, and the conditions and findings as in the report.
Comments to the motion? Vote, please.
Motion passed 5-0.
There's a 10-day appeal period. Will the clerk please call case 6B?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6B regarding case EIR number 327, SP 2009-70129, SP 20, and LU 2009-70130. Applicant: Thousand Oaks Redevelopment Agency. Request to consider: 1. Environmental impact report, EIR number 327, and the mitigation monitoring plan; 2. To consider adopting Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, establishing new development and design guidelines for properties within the plan boundary; and 3. To consider changing the land use element of the general plan from the existing commercial, industrial, medium-density residential, high-density residential, and institutional designations which currently apply within the proposed specific plan boundaries to commercial residential. Location: Along Thousand Oaks Boulevard and nearby properties from Moore Park Road, Conejo Boulevard in the west to Duesenberg Drive, Auto Mall Drive in the east.
Mr. Alawame, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I'd like to direct your attention to the monitor for staff's presentation. Again, this hearing is to consider and review the proposed Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. There's three items, as mentioned. The specific plan itself, which will establish new development and design standards for properties within the plan, and then the general plan amendment to amend the general plan land use element from existing commercial, industrial, medium-density residential, high-density residential, industrial, and institution, I'm sorry, designation to commercial/residential, and to retain the existing parks, golf courses, and open space. And part of the specific plan and general plan amendment is to certify the environmental impact report and the mitigation monitoring plan. Again, the boundary of the specific plan is the properties along both sides of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, from Moore Park Road to the west and Duesenberg to the east. Background for the specific plan. In 2004, part of the Attitude Survey, it showed that beautification of Thousand Oaks Boulevard is number-one priority for the community. In 2005, the property owners formed Business Improvement District, which funded the specific plan preparation. 2006, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association submitted long-range fission statements to the City Council, which the City Council endorsed that fission statement. Based on that fission statements, the TOBA prepared the draft specific plan and submitted that to the city in 2009, and then the City Council initiated the specific plan and authorized the preparation of the EIR. Also in that year, 77 percent of respondent to an Attitude Survey again mentioned that they'd like to see the Boulevard to be improved in appearance and pedestrian access. In 2011, June of this year, there was a joint City Council Planning Commission study session, and there was a lot of comments received, and those comments were incorporated into the final specific plan. Between July and August, staff met several times with TOBA and their consultant to fine-tune the revised land use table and the development standards within the specific plan. The existing general plan designation is, the majority of it within the specific plan is commercial, and as a result, the zoning, majority of the zoning within the specific plan is commercial, C1, C2, and C3 zone. There's approximately 1.8 million square feet developed, mostly commercial within the area. There's an apartment building, 57 units, 18 individual homes, and two assisted live-in facilities. The current Thousand Oaks Boulevard has a mix of newer and older buildings and shopping centers. The majority is older. Most of them are well-maintained. It's low-density commercial. The highest building is two-story. There's only one building that has four floors. Most of the area is built out. There's a few parcels that fakened, and Civic Arts Plaza along with the Gardens of the World and the lakes form the core of the downtown area. There's a picture of an old building along Boulevard that needs revitalization. Another building along the Boulevard that's old. Here's an overview of the Boulevard, and on the right-hand side, there's two brand-new buildings that were built in the last 10 years, and on the left, there's two buildings that's been renovated recently. Lubie's Restaurant went through extensive renovation in addition to that restaurant recently, and the Social Security Building again went through exterior renovation of that building. And here's an area photo of the Civic Arts Plaza and the Gardens of the World on the right-hand side, and that will be the core of the downtown area within the specific plan. The goals of the specific plan: to create a unique and identifiable commercial corridor, and to create a pedestrian-friendly environment, and that will have an attractive environment for pedestrians, would allow mixed-use development, and will allow more intense development because of the need for that to create the pedestrian-friendly, and will provide public amenities within the specific plan area. The specific plan has eight chapters, and staff will be focusing on Chapter 4, Land Use, Circulation and Streetscape, Chapter 5, and Chapter 7, Implementation and Administration, Chapter 8. Staff added Chapter 9, which is Environmental Impact Reports, which include the mitigation measures within the EIR. The land use, part of the Chapter 4, staff worked with TOBA extensively in this land use table, which is Appendix A within the specific plan, to create a one-stop list of all the uses that would be either regulated or permitted within the specific plan based on the location of that use, either on the front tier Boulevard or behind it. Most uses will be allowed through a development permit when it comes in for new development. Some will require special use permit. Some of the development standards within the plan will apply to the entire specific plan area, and there are special standards that will apply to locations within the plan itself, which is T.O. Boulevard frontage, adjacent to residential parcels, and mixed-use projects. And there's also in the plan, there's a supplemental design guidelines for the entire area that will cover the entire development. Building setbacks that will apply to properties not fronting the Boulevard, again, as shown in the table, the front setback will be 10-feet minimum landscape. If parking or building in the front, the code requires now 20. The rear is 10 feet, and it's similar to the current code. The side setback, again, it's similar to the current code. Even though it shows zero on the now, but however, if there's parking next to the property requires four-foot minimum landscape setback. The building height within those areas that not fronting the Boulevard and sidewalk width, the proposed is eight feet. The existing now is 10 feet, and it varies from location to location within those parcels that's not fronting T.O. Boulevard. The building height, and this, again, this revisions to the standards based on the input that staff and TOBA got from the joint study session, the height is 50 feet average with three-story maximum. However, that could be up to 65 with four stories. However, that's part of the incentive program, and any additional floor requires planning commission, public hearing, review, and consideration. It's not an automatic in the specific plan. And the height within the current zone is 35 feet in the commercial zone and 25 feet in the residential zone. And here's a diagram showing the three-story maximum and the average height, and you can see the third floor setback from the first and second floor. That's a requirement within the specific plan. The off-street parking that will apply to all the properties within the specific plan. Currently, the retail office in the code requires one parking for 250 square feet. The medical requires 1 to 200 square feet. The proposed plan will require 1 to 300 for office retail and 1 to 250 for medical. The restaurants currently, we break it down to three categories: one for seating area, which is 145; one for bar area, which is 1 to 35; and one for the other area, 1 to 250. And the proposed plan will require 1 to 100, and that will make it a lot easier for staff to evaluate future projects rather than trying to break down the restaurant into smaller components. The outdoor seating, currently right now, up to 320 square feet, no additional parking. Beyond that, we're required to 1 to 100, and that's similar to what we have now. For residential, currently right now, for condo, three spaces required. For one-bedroom apartments, one and a half space. For two-bedroom apartments, two spaces. And for three-bedrooms is two and a half spaces. The proposed plan will combine apartments and condominiums under one category. For studio will be one space, one bedroom, 1.25 spaces, and two bedrooms, 1.75. And again, these parking standards are based on downtown urban setting and a lot of other cities within Ventura County and others like Burbank, Glendale. Santa Monica has similar standards to those standards in the proposed plan. Additionally, nightclub and bars and hookah lounge, which is a use that's been added to the plan, currently right now, requires 1 to 35 for seating area and 1 to 250 for other. Again, to make it a simple process, the plan proposes 1 to 75. Gyms, health, and health clubs, right now is 1 to 200 for activity plus 250 for other areas. It will be 1 to 300 across the board. Exercise, dance, and aerobic studios, right now is 1 to 45 for the activity area plus 1 to 250 for others. The proposed plan will be 175 for the activity area plus 1300 for others. And again, those are similar to other cities that I mentioned, and they have the similar standards within their downtown district and their parking requirements. Part of the specific plan would require a parking management plan to be prepared, and that will include in lieu parking fees and shared parking and other parking management that needs to be studied for the Boulevard, including public parking lots. The proposed plan proposes a minimum 3 percent of the building footprint to be provided as public open space, patio, courtyard, and outdoor dining area. And as I mentioned earlier, anything over two-floor in height, the third and fourth floor need to be recessed, a minimum of 10 feet to create an articulation to the building. The public exterior space is not required in the code, so will be a new requirement in the plan. There's an example of outdoor space. This is the Village at Moore Park, Moore Park and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. This area is about 2,000 square feet, which comes up to almost 5 percent of the footprint of the building, and that's what the plan, the specific plan envisioned to create, those kind of environment. The Boulevard frontage, for parcels along the frontage, the setback, building setback will be from 0 to 15 feet. However, if that could not be done because of physical constraints like flood control channel or topography reasons, then the requirement will be 25 feet to park and order building, and that area could be used for angle parking if it could be accommodated in that location. And here's a diagram showing the 0 to 15 setback on the left side, and on the right side is if there's a physical constraint on the side. The width of the sidewalk, there's two standards. From Urb's Road to Conejo School Road, which is the downtown core, will be 20 feet. That will be, we have an existing 10-foot sidewalk, so there'll be an additional 10-foot easement, and that will create a 20-foot sidewalk. And other areas within the plan will be 15 feet, which is an additional five-foot easement. And here's just pictures of an existing 10-foot sidewalk along the Boulevard, another 10-foot sidewalk, and this is in Santa Barbara, and that's the 15 feet or 16 feet which is in other areas, and it shows the planter, the trees, and will have 12-foot clear sidewalk for the pedestrian activities. And this is, again, Santa Barbara, but this is 20-foot sidewalk which would apply to the Civic Arts Plaza downtown area. So, as you can see, it's wide enough to accommodate planters and street furniture, and still have enough width for pedestrians. This is another 20-foot sidewalk in Ventura, and it's a similar design that the plan proposes. The plan also, within the frontage of the Boulevard, any building, any parcel that has longer than 200 feet frontage would require to have one pedestrian connection from the back of the building with the parking lot to the front, to the Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And that will be 10 feet minimum if it's a single story. If it's taller than two stories, then that would need to be 15 feet wide. For parcels less than 200 feet and frontage, a minimum of eight-foot wide pedestrian connection. For projects over 10,000 square foot in size, the specific plan will require in lieu fee equal to a quarter percent of the building cost to be put together for public arts within the specific plan area. And here's a diagram of the pedestrian connection to Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And here's the promenade. This is a good example of pedestrian connection from the parking lot in the back to the front. Here's another one in Ventura County, in City Ventura, I'm sorry, pedestrian connection. The building height along the frontage is similar to the other areas, but there's an additional standard for the properties fronting T.O. Boulevard. The first floor needs to be minimum 20 feet, and the plate height, the inside floor area is 14 feet, and that's to create the pedestrian feel for retail and the interaction between the outside and the inside. Additionally, the facade of the first floor requires a four-foot minimum window height, and the glazing needs to be transparent and internal lit for, again, the pedestrian environment. 65 percent of the facade must be windows, and if the building is larger than 100 feet, then at least 50 percent of that will be retail. And there's an example of retail storefronts with those standards similarly applied to that storefront. This is Plumbers in Thousand Oaks. It has the same standard except it has the landscape in the front. For parcels adjacent to residential, existing residential properties, the setback will be based on the height of the building. If it is 25 feet in height, then it's 20-foot setback. If it's 45, it's 30 feet, and if it's 50 or higher, will be 50 feet. And here's a diagram of the gradual increase in setback based on the height of the building. Certain activities will be prohibited within setback next to residential, loading docks, surface area, repair yards, and any activity that would create noise and odor would not be required or allowed in those areas. The mixed-use concept, again, the mixed-use is an important part of the specific plan because it will create mixed use of office and retail and residential retail, and it's an important component of the specific plan for the pedestrian environment. It will enable residents to live and work in the downtown area, and it also comply with SP 375 Sustainable Community Strategy. Minimum for multifamily development will be 10 units per acre. There will be special standards for this mixed use with the residential. All parking for residential units should be on site. There will be pedestrian connection to the commercial areas along the frontage, and of course, the lighting and noise impacts will need to be minimized for those residential units. And here is a diagram showing the mixed-use concept. The first floor is retail and office only, and then the second, third floor could be retail, office, and residential component. Here's a project in Ventura, City of Ventura, shows the retail on the first floor and two floor of residential units on top. Chapter 5, this was circulation and streetscape concept. There's two zones. One is the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Streetscape Treatment, and the other one is Civic Arts Plaza Streetscape Treatment. For the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Zone, there's no changes to the existing cross-section where they got to the width of the lanes, and the share of four bikes will stay the way it is right now. Street trees is Chinese Pistachon London Plain as the main trees on the Boulevard, and accent trees will be Crab Mortel and Red Spire Pear. And here's a picture of those trees, just to give you an idea what they look like. Again, the street section will not change, will stay the way it is right now, and this is plan view of the street section with the share of lanes on the Boulevard. The Civic Arts Plaza Streetscape Zone is between Urb's and Conejo School Road. And again, in that zone, no changes to the existing street section, and the share of four bikes will stay. The only difference between this and the other section is landscape median which we have right now between Dallas and Conejo School Road. The plan will extend that from Dallas Drive to Urb's Road. Street trees in this location will be Chinese flame trees and typo, I hope I pronounced it right. Accent trees will be Crab Mortal and Bradford Pear. And there's a picture of what those trees will look like. Again, the street section will not change from what's existing, and here is a plan view of that cross-section. Part of the specific plan is to install what's called enhanced pedestrian nodes at intersections within the plan. There's eight of the eight intersections. And the purpose, again, is to create the pedestrian-friendly environment for plazas and to create a safe environment for pedestrians to cross the Boulevard. That will include nine-feet bulbous, enhanced pedestrian crossing and pavings, plazas and entries at the businesses, additional street furniture, and trees and landscape features. And those intersection will be Boardwalk, Hooting Camp, southbound Highway 23, and Offram, Urb's Road, Dallas Drive, Conejo School Road, Skyline Drive, and Duesenberg Drive. And here's an overview of those pedestrian nodes. As you can see, this main road is Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and those, and the corners of it is the pedestrian nodes with the nine-foot bulbous, and another corner there is the Courtyard Plaza next to commercial properties. And that's the visual of what the plan envisions for the pedestrian enhancement nodes. Part of the specific plan will create directional signs, street signs, Boulevard gateway signs, and Civic Arts Plaza Zone gateway signs, and that will be a follow-up study to the specific plan, that we need to come up with those unique signs for the specific plan. Chapter 7, the implementation. Part of the implementation chapter is to create an incentive program, and basically, incentive is for property owner to install improvement that will benefit the community. Those benefits will be lot consolidation, a lot of parcels on the Boulevard that's smaller in size, and consolidating them into a bigger parcel will create a benefit to the community. Public parking facilities, multifamily housing, public exterior spaces, and enhanced pedestrian nodes. The incentive or the reward to provide those is to increase the building height up to four-story. But again, that fourth floor, based on the incentive program, requires planning commission hearing. Example for that is you get two points for lot consolidation up to one acre, more than one acre. You get to have a point for additional public exterior space, which is over 50 percent of what's required, and that will give you two and a half points, which will give you the increase of the fourth floor in height. Administration chapter deals with the processing of Administration chapter deals with the process of entitlements. If the project complies with the specific land standards, then it will be administrative development permit approved by staff. There will be administrative special use permit for some project. However, the planning commission is required for development permit that does not comply with the standards, for certain uses that require special use permit, and for any incentive program request. Administer, again, administrative aid deals with legal non-conforming uses in building. When the plan gets adopted, there will be legal non-conforming uses in building the way they exist now because they will not comply. If the building is involuntarily destroyed by fire or act of God or earthquake, then it could be replaced with the same standards, the way it exists right now. But if it's not, then it has to comply with the specific plan. The non-conforming use may be expanded up to ten percent. The same thing with the building, non-conformable building, maybe expanded the lesser of ten percent or eight thousand square feet, and that's similar to what we have now in municipal code. Sustainability within the specific plan, and the plan achieves majority of points of, for certification under Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design Neighborhood Development Program, and the plan also meets the ten tenants of livable communities developed by Ventura County Civic Alliance. The general plan amendment, again, the request is to create or change the designation within the specific plan to commercial slash residential, which is existing in the general plan if it's approved through a specific plan, and to retain the existing parks, golf courses, and open space for Zenega Ridge Open Space. Major E, which is part of the general plan amendment, again, major E background on that, it was approved in nineteen ninety-six, and requires fort, photo approval for reclassification of land from existing parks, golf courses, and open space, increase in the maximum number of residential units beyond the nineteen ninety-six level, increases in land area designated commercial. The commercial residential will apply to the entire specific plan as mentioned, and it will, in order to support the mixed-use concept of the plan. Current residential capacity in the plan area is two hundred and fourteen units, based on the existing medium-density residential and high-density residential, deducting the existing residential units within the plan. And the recommendation to divide, to divide the two hundred and fourteen units as follows, will be allocated in three districts or three areas. Moore Park to Rancho for seventy-one units, Rancho Caneo School to, Rancho Caneo School seventy-two units, Caneo School to Duesenberg seventy-one units. However, fifty percent of those units must be constructed vertically as part of the mixed-use project on the Boulevard, and that's the major reason for the specific one, to create that pedestrian environment by having residential units on top of the retail along the frontage. This approach will ensure that the units themselves are distributed evenly within the specific plan, and, and the mixed-use, and it's part of the mixed-use project for Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Environmental impact report, again, there's eight chapters within the AIR, and as shown here, the, the AIR analyzed three development phases, existing development as it is right now, then specific plan, which equals to the general plan build-out plus the specific plan additional density, and the specific plan plus cumulative. This, this table shows the existing commercial, non-residential, residential, non-residential within the specific, existing is three hundred and fifty-nine units, and approximately one point eight square feet of, for non-residential within the, existing in the area. The future per the general plan does not contemplate any residential units, and it will allow up to five hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred square feet of non-residential square footage. The specific plan additional will add three hundred seventy-five residential units and six hundred eleven five hundred square feet of non-residential. And that's based on, when we evaluated this, we looked at the specific plan area, there is approximately, there's two hundred and twenty acres within the plan. A hundred and nine of them is underutilized, and ten acres is vacant parcels. Staff evaluated the specific plan, and based on the standards, development standards in that we came up with a floor area ratio, and that came up to point four-five. So, we used that ratio on those existing hundred and nine and ten acres within the plan, and we came up with a number of square foot that, square foot that could be added. And then, after that, we deducted the existing square footage within that, within those parcels, otherwise we'd be double counting. And then, after that, we divided those square footage into twenty-five percent for residential units, and that's based on eight hundred square feet per unit, and then the rest of it is seventy-five percent will be for the commercial development. And then after that, we added the expected eighty-eight thousand industrial development, and that's what we came up with, one million two hundred and eight thousand square feet. And out of that is, again, the three hundred seventy-five units based on the quarter percentage of that at eight hundred units, eight hundred square feet per unit. And then, excuse me, as I said, one point two million, we deducted the existing, what the general plan would accommodate, and the remaining is the six hundred and eleven five hundred square feet of commercial development within the specific plan. I know it's a long explanation, but this chart shows the non-residential potential. It's a twenty-five percent increase from what's existing in the general plan build-out and with the specific plan. And for residential, again, on the left side is existing and general, general plan build-out, and on the left is the plan, the specific plan, and that's almost a hundred percent increase in residential units. But again, that's, that's an important part of the specific plan to allow residential development within the area to create the pedestrian environment. The AIR looked, there's three classification within the AIR with regard to the impact, significant, class one is significant and unmitigated impacts, class two is mitigated to less than significant level, and class three level, less than significant impact. Class one, there's two major impacts that could not be mitigated, greenhouse gases and the traffic. And the traffic is because due to the conflict between the mitigation measures and the pedestrian friendly environment that will, that's envisioned through the specific plan. The greenhouse gases, primary constituent, constituent of that will be the CO2, the CO2 produced by vehicles, industrial emission, and electrical generation. The threshold of that will be exceeded by the specific plan, the additional square footage, and there's no feasible mitigation to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions. Traffic, again, the mitigation measures identified to retain level of surface C, or better, at all intersections. Level of surface D projections typically at the evening peak, peak demand at cumulative, which means the specific plan plus everything else at cumulative. So that's, in the future, development could take ten to twenty years to reach that at those PM peak based on, on the specific plan. Street widening and restriding of those intersections will, will be in conflict with the specific plan goal of creating pedestrian friendly environment, and will be at five intersection, which is Moore Park, Rancho, Caneo School, Skyline, and Hampshire. Staff recommends a policy to accept a level of surface D, which is one below the existing policy for the plan area in order to strike a balance, again, between the level of surface that we have now and the pedestrian friendly environment that the plan envisioned to create. And that will, that will include widening at, the widening of two of the five class one intersections, which is Hampshire and Moore Park, and full improvement at the intersections outside the specific plan area. Existing general plan policy enables, again, the council, city council, to accept lower than level of surface C in order to preserve and enhance landscaping and studying integrity. This lower, lower level of surface below C is, is used at the engine specific plan, and with regard to downtown setting, it's expected to have lower level of surface because that's the intent, is to slow down the traffic and create that pedestrian environment within downtown areas. Class two impacts, evaluate the land use, noise, biological resources, water supply, hazards, and hazardous materials, and aesthetics. The draft plan did not address steeper terrain, over twenty-five percent natural terrain, and so the revised plan added that protection for anything over twenty-five percent grade. Again, the oak trees, with regard to oak trees, the original draft plan proposed two feet in diameter protection for oak trees. However, the revised plans address the city's current standards, which is two inches in diameter. The building heights, the plan, again, fifty feet average height proposed, sixty-five foot maximum with incentives. Currently now, thirty-five feet maximum, majority of the specific plan area. However, there are areas that could be higher than that, seventy-five feet through a specific plan, and a C-four zone and/or height overlay zone within the city. There's examples of building height, this is thirty-two feet building height, two-story. This is thirty-five building average height with forty-three feet tower, and that's a single-story building. This is thirty-five average building height, and the tower's forty-seven feet, and that's the promenade. This is sixty-five feet building, that's the Old Bank of America building, and that's a four-story building. The following is illustration of the massing of the building height within the AIR. Here's, this is just illustration of a massing and not reflective of the architecture guidelines, so just to show the massing and the height that could be part of the AIR. Here's another example, this is existing view, and that's the simulation overlay photo. This following slides is, depicts what, what could be done through the specific plan with regard to architecture design guidelines and articulation, and the materials, and the intent of the specific plan that's been prepared by Toba consultant, RRM Design. And here's another example of existing, and that's proposed, and that's two-story building. Here's another example at the corner, and that's what the specific plan would do with regard to architecture design standards. The mitigation measures requires, and the AIR requires city review of building over fifty-five feet in height, and a case-by-case basis, and as I mentioned before, anything over fifty feet automatically requires planning commission review and consideration. The alternatives to the project, the AIR looked at three alternatives. One is no project alternative, assume only the general plan build-out. Downtown alternative, more development between the twenty-three freeway to Hampshire, which is approximately one point six miles, less, less development outside this area, overall ten percent reduction in, in development. And the third alternative is reduce development intensity alternative, which will be fifty percent reduction in the development in the specific plan, additional development throughout the area with three-story maximum height. The revised plan that you have is closer to this alternative due to the reduced building Conclusion, again, in the past attitude survey, there's always community support for the beautification of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and the revitalization of the Boulevard. This is based on the proposed long-range fishing statement, although submitted by Toba to the city, by the, by the property owners, and this plan is intended to create a framework for the long-range enhancement and revitalization of the Boulevard. Again, this is just a development policy proposal, not a brick-and-mortar project. Projects in the future will be coming in and will be processed. The draft plan reflects, again, the input and the comments received during the June twenty-first joint session meeting, and also from staff that, during the several meetings we had with Toba. And the plans represent, again, a cooperative effort by the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, the consultant, RRM Design, and staff, and this is an important plan for, I mean, I've been here for twenty-four years, and the last twenty years, I helped for a specific plan, and I heard about it several times, so this is an important plan for the, for the Boulevard that finally, hopefully, it will come to fruition soon. Staff recommend that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of general plan and the specific plan, and to certify the AIR. Staff will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Before I open for questions, just wanted to also win attendance Claudia Pedrosso, any questions on sustainability? Brad Bustle, engineer, any water questions? Rick Burgess, any questions on the EIR? Bob Mattson from RBF, any traffic study questions? And Beth Baden, any traffic questions? So, open up to commission questions, the staff? Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you. I just have one quick question. You called out the nature and the name of the trees that will be in the, in the landscaping. Are all of them a deep-rooted trees so they won't be impacting the sidewalk?
Yes, our city landscape supervisor reviewed those trees, and they recommend, recommended those trees. Originally, in our original plan in April two thousand nine, they have a longer list of trees, and I sent that list to our landscape crew, and they said some trees are not recommended for the same, same reason. So, a lot of trees being deleted, and the, and the remaining is recommended by the city.
Okay, good, because that's important for the pedestrian. And also, in your report, you were talking about fifty-foot-high buildings, and then fifty-five, was the fifty the old and fifty-five is the new?
That's under the AIR. The AIR envisioned up to fifty-five feet. However, the, the standards within the specific plan is up to fifty feet.
Okay, that's why, I was a little confused when you were doing that. Okay, thank you, that's all.
Commissioner Fears.
Thank you. You had mentioned kind of the process in which staff went through to evaluate that you felt that you're only going to get about six hundred thousand more square feet and three hundred and seventy-five units. Are you able to point me to where that is in the EIR? Because I don't seem to remember some of the things you were talking about, about the floor area ratio being point four-five, the residential-commercial mix being twenty-five to seventy-five. I don't, I don't remember seeing that.
I, I don't, I don't think it's, it's in the AIR. That was, Mark Duncan answered that.
Yeah. Just quickly, no, that, that calculation is not in the EIR. It is the method that I described at the June twenty-first meeting in terms of how we came up with the, the projected square footage and development units, but that methodology is not in, in the EIR. The approach, as Mr. Alawami said, was to, again, look at the entire area in terms of vacant land, land likely to be redeveloped, and then land not likely to be redeveloped, because as, as Mr. Alawami pointed out, there are a lot of newer buildings on the Boulevard. And we took all of that land, used a point four-five floor-to-area ratio, which is typical of downtown areas, to calculate the total maximum under this proposed specific plan, and then basically backed out what would develop under the general plan with or without the, the specific plan. And the difference, that, that delta is what we call the specific plan additional, and that's about six hundred thousand square feet, or about a twenty-five percent increase in commercial square footage. The point four-five is typical for downtown areas. Right now on the Boulevard, the floor area ratio is probably about point one-eight to about point two-five in general.
Okay, thank you. I mean, that's the reason why, one of the things I'm asking is I'm coming in here, this is sort of the first time that I've really seen that as the specific, you know, method by which we've come up with these numbers. I've tried to look in here in Appendix C in the volume two, and there is sort of a breakdown of, you take the specific plan, you sort of divide it into A1, A2, B, C, D, and there just seems to be a straight formula that kind of comes, comes out to say, based on the, the acreage, this is the number of units. But I've been having a hard time coming, trying to evaluate whether that's a realistic number or not. One comment regarding the floor area ratio, there are, have been, I, I'm trying to gain an understanding of whether this is typical of, of other, other things. I have seen allowable maximum floor area ratios of one to some of the downtowns. So, it's, so while we're using that as kind of an average number, we don't know whether it's, will, will actually play out with respect to the densities of, of the proposed projects. We've never had these before, so we really don't know how they might actually impact the intensity. One of the concerns I have on that is that if you take the two hundred and twenty net acres, you take the available two hundred and fourteen units that are under the current general plan designation that we're trying to redistribute, that's two hundred and fourteen units over two hundred and twenty acres. We're saying those have to be developed at a density of a minimum of ten units per net acre. That means there's only That means there's only going to be 21.4 acres of the entire Boulevard that would be developed, and it could actually be less if it's done at a higher intensity. It would be hard for me to believe that there's going to be a significant amount of pedestrian activity that is due to people actually living in the specific plan boundary area. We're going to still have to rely on people walking into the boundary area who live next to it, or people driving in. So that's going to, it seems to me, just on the face, that that could be the most significant metric by which we determine success of this, is how well the pedestrian-friendly environment attracts people in and have them get out of their car and walk around, not necessarily whether they live there.
Correct. And that, again, 214 is based on what's existing right now with regard to specific plan. However, there's 187 units citywide bank. And when the 214 units are finished, they're all used up, any future development can ask the city council to allocate some of those units to the specific plan. And again, it's up to the city council as a policy if they want to do that or not. But again, the 214, we don't have that now. It should be enough impact to create the pedestrian, it's not going to be one or two. Hopefully, it's going to be smaller ones and to create that pedestrian area or block to create that kind of atmosphere.
Okay. Thank you. One last question, which you alluded to, was the allocation of units through Measure E. And maybe if I can get some legal advice on understanding why this interpretation is presented the way it is. My understanding is that Measure E affects the, when certain types of general plan amendments take effect. So the general plan amendment that we have in front of us, which changes a variety of things from commercial and residential industrial to commercial-residential, that is what is affected by Measure E. Anything that is dealt with the specific plan must be consistent with whatever that is. Whether we allow certain zonings, regulations that allow for certain units to actually be developed isn't really the issue. The issue is to determine what is the maximum allowable number of units that could be permitted under those designations. So that would require an approval of the voters. If it exceeds the allocation, we apply it, and it sucks from that bank. If it's more than what that bank is, that requires voter approval. Am I correct in that understanding? Because that's different than what the EIR and the specific plan is saying.
Yeah, that's a complicated question. The city attorney's office looked at this in depth in conjunction with the community development department. And the way the city has dealt with the allocation in the banks is on a parcel-by-parcel basis, generally. Generally, you see a general plan amendment that coincides with a particular development project. In keeping with that, and there's been interpretations that have been approved by the city council in terms of how you account for the amount of units, the city attorney's office feels very comfortable with using the bank, this 214, in the specific plan area. And then, once those are used up, the next development that goes over that amount will either have to draw from the citywide bank or go to a vote. And the city attorney's office feels that that interpretation is legally defensible.
Okay. Can I pose a hypothetical on this one? Let me assume I'm a developer, and there have been approvals of projects that are exactly like mine. And my development permit application says I want to build this particular development within there which is identical to the one next door, which did not receive voter approval. What in my development permit application requires a vote relative to a general plan amendment?
I'm going to try to answer it this way. If it got to that point where a developer came in, city staff would be keeping track of how many units are available. So when that application comes in for a project that's, say, for, you know, 42 units, and there's only 17 in the bank, that applicant would be informed that they would either have to get citywide allocations from city council first, or there'd have to be a vote under Measure E.
I guess that my, I have significant discomfort with that interpretation, because the general plan amendment has already been approved. That was the point in time at which it had to go to a vote or not. That's when it became effective, not when, 30 years down the road, when some development, in fact, it's not even 30. We have to kind of assess how things work. If Measure E isn't in effect, it's going to expire, or it's scheduled to expire. So we have to understand how that actually works as well. I'm genuinely concerned that we are setting a precedent that we are not abiding by what the voters wanted to see happen in 1996 when they approved Measure E. Because I'm concerned we're setting ourselves up to allow for developers to sue for their rights, because their development permit doesn't have a general plan amendment associated with it, and therefore shouldn't be subject to one that requires voter approval.
Measure E does create difficulties in implementation, so it's not a perfect law to implement. The city attorney's office, though, feels very comfortable that staff has some leeway to interpret Measure E in a way that not only preserves the intent of Measure E, but that makes it something workable for development projects moving forward. So staff and the city attorney's office try to strike a middle ground that would be defensible, and that's what's before you. Now, you're free to disagree with that, I suppose, on a policy perspective, if that's your choice, and to make that known.
Yeah, I see there's too many hypotheticals that end up making it, I mean, if we weren't designating, let's take the industrial and the residential acreage that's in the specific plan boundary. That's about 30.7 acres. If we designated it commercial, that would mean we'd be adding 30.7 acres of land on the general plan that is designated commercial. That in and of itself would require voter approval, because the general plan has been amended to change that designation. It has nothing to do with the actual development that occurs after that. The fact that we're doing it commercial-residential only increases the potential, and there are complexities to it, because the designation was actually created after Measure E was approved, and it was already applied. So, I mean, I'm concerned that that happened as well, but with respect to something so large as the specific plan, and we're kind of interpreting differently that this might require voter approval at the general plan amendment stage, I have great concerns. I'm addressing them now, making them known to the commission.
And let me say, that's one of the reasons staff felt it was important to keep those 214 units within the plan area, instead of letting them go to the citywide bank, that with that type of control on it, we feel that we can accurately monitor how many units are yet to be developed into residential units under the old general plan designation. So with that type of control, our office feels very confident that that would pass muster.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? No additional questions? Okay. We'll go to the main speaker, and I also have three other speakers that will be part of that presentation. Mr. Rick Principi will be the main speaker, followed by Rick Lemo, Tim Gallagher, and Eric Justiceon. There'll be 15 minutes total.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. Thank you for hearing the matter. My name's Rick Principi. I am chair of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Improvement District. It's been 19 years now since the Thousand Oaks businesses and property owners have been working on this plan. For years and its many committees, the city has attempted to design and define a plan for Thousand Oaks Boulevard. They wanted to create a downtown district, but it never happened. Finally, at the suggestion of one of the past mayors, we were told for this plan to succeed, it should be created by the Boulevard property owners themselves and then presented to the city. So that was 19 years ago, and for 19 years, we've been meeting all the time and trying to put this whole plan together. Approximately seven years ago, the Thousand Oaks Property Owners Association was formed. Thousand Oaks Boulevard, the specific plan area, is, as somebody mentioned, from Canale Boulevard, which is just west of Moore Park Road to Duesenberg Drive. There's roughly, grows about 275 acres, and it includes 231 small property owners. We're really talking now about small businesses in this town, not big businesses. If you take a look at the Boulevard, that's what most of the ownership is. Once the organization, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association was organized, it created the Building Improvement District. And this is where the property owners voluntarily funded the consultants, engineers, specialists to create the specific plan that we presented to you tonight. So this is something that everybody felt that was so important, that we didn't come to the city and ask for the money. We decided to fund it ourselves and go out and research the whole area. In preparation of this plan, we met with the residents of the city, the city staff, elected officials, a special committee of the former mayors. We put many of the former mayors together in a committee to go over this plan and review all the objectives we had, and various consultants and their input and suggestion. We also met with the major homeowners associations, made presentations of them as well. The goal of this specific plan is the orderly development of Thousand Oaks Boulevard in a method consistent with the general plan. And I want to just reiterate again, we're talking about this specific plan area, the guidelines, the ordinances, the zoning, all the landscape. Everything we're talking about only affects this area on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, in the redevelopment area. We're not trying to change anything in Thousand Oaks or other areas or whatever. It's our particular area. The main objectives of this plan is to create a pedestrian-friendly corridor where residents can take their families and friends in a safe environment to shop, dine, and walk, as well as ride in marked bicycle paths. This is something that everybody wanted. The plan wants to encourage property owners to update their properties without the risk of imposing ordinances that would be cost-prohibited and could actually restrict future uses. The creation of plazas, public art, and open spaces are just a few of the benefits. This plan is consistent with the main desires indicated in the past city resident surveys. The residents want it. They want a downtown that they are proud of today, and with the traffic, cost of gasoline, environmental issues, it's desirable to be able to park once, dine, shop, and entertain without looking for another parking spot down the street. The Boulevard businesses really need it. The small local businesses are having a very hard time in this economy. They must compete with the larger box stores, the major shopping centers. Vacancies are the highest they've been in four years, the rents are depressed on the Boulevard. This is causing a lot of property owners not to want to refurbish their properties at this time. Financing's not available. It's a very difficult thing, because how do you invest money in your property if you don't have a tenant who can operate their business and survive? The city needs it. The city lives on sales tax revenue. We don't want our residents traveling outside the area to shop, dine. A pedestrian-friendly Boulevard reduces crime and increases security as well. This is finally the opportunity that the city, the residents, and local businesses have been waiting for. The many volunteers of Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association have put endless hours of time and expertise to make this happen, and this doesn't include all the hours and time staff and everybody else that the city has put into. We need your approval and support. Our logo says it all, it's about time. Tonight, we have several speakers, consultants, who'd be more than happy to answer the questions you might have regarding the plan, but I think it's a great opportunity for this planning commission and the next city council to approve it. So thank you for your time.
Okay. Questions of the speaker? Commissioner Ferris.
Just one quick one. Who, either you or one of the consultants would be the best one to address sort of the need of the property owners for the additional height that's being proposed in the specific plan?
Well, we have the consultant, Eric Justiceon from RRM, who was a consultant to put this together.
Would he be the best person to ask that question of?
Well, I mean, there's, several of us could answer the question, so it just depends on how you want it answered. But it, well, the reason I'm saying is that the consultant is answering it from their planning, expertise, everything else.
Fair enough, yeah, exactly. I guess my concern would be the question I have. Currently, under the zoning and the designations, most of the properties allow you to go up to 35 feet. And the question would be, is that what is, you know, what we're being asked to is have those heights go up to 50 feet, and potentially with incentive, 65 feet. What is the rationale to say we need that extra height that you couldn't use under just the current 35 feet? I know that a lot of things, a lot of good things are happening with this plan, like all the set packs and making things a bit more flexible and consistent. That's all good. Why the extra height?
Well, that's real easy to answer. Retailers today lease cubic space. They no longer lease square footage. They need height, they need storage, they need stacking, they need depth, and the overall feeling of the retail space is very important. If you take a look at the new developments today that are 100 percent occupied, that are attracting chain stores, that are attracting new businesses, you walk inside, the average ceiling heights are somewhere between 20 and 25 to 30 feet. This is just floor-to-ceiling on a one-story building. The one-story building that was just completed on Thousand Oaks Boulevard has an average height of, I believe, 32 feet. So that's what's important today, and if a tenant has to walk into a store, a retail store that only has a 12-foot ceiling versus one that has a 25-foot ceiling, there's no question that's where he's going to go. So what happens is, unless you allow the property owner to develop these properties that the retailer is looking for, he's not going to lease it, it's going to be a very depressed rent, and he's not going to attract a quality type of tenant who can sustain the Boulevard.
Okay, I mean, that's a great answer. The question still is, if it's allowable to be 35 feet now?
Well, that's one story.
Right.
We're talking about multi-story buildings. So if you have a one-story that's 20 or 30 feet, you need to add more density. You can't afford to develop that piece of property because of the cost of land.
Well, the, what's being proposed right now is 50, and that's a three-story building.
Yes. And right now, we have two-story buildings, and so a 50-foot building, what it's going to give you is a retail space of somewhere around 20, 25 feet, and the second and third floors, because they're office or possibly residential, can be dropped down into around a 12- or 15-foot range. But the retail is the one that really needs the height.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Principi.
Thank you.
Rick Lemo. Lolita, can you put some time on the clock? Let's go with 10 minutes. It's not working? Okay. Okay.
We have five minutes left?
Let's go with 10 minutes.
We wouldn't be having, we wouldn't be having the question and answer be coming off the time.
Yeah, it's a total of 15, so let's go with 10 for the remainder.
Good evening, Chair Fisher, Vice Chair Reynolds, staff, and planning commissioners. We appreciate your time. My name's Rick Lemo. I live in the Newbury Park section of Thousand Oaks, and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, of which I am the president. Really quickly, want to give you a broad overview of history and reasons behind and logic for the Boulevard's specific plan. We're here tonight to demonstrate to you that we listened to your comments and concerns during our study session, and we, along with staff, have worked tirelessly to revise this plan, and the city staff has been extremely patient and stern, both, and are responsible for the recommendation that comes to you tonight. When this city was founded decades ago, the early architects wanted to create a special place in Southern California. They wanted a city surrounded by open space with a regional hospital, an enviable education system, a thriving center of the city, and orderly, limited residential growth. All of those goals were achieved except for one, a heart of the city, a destination where the citizens gathered for shopping, dining, entertainment. That goal is in danger of slipping away unless we act. An article in the Sunday Star correctly noted that ticket sales at the Civic Arts Plaza are declining precipitously. Part of the reason for that is the lack of a nightlife. After one exits the theater, there is no there-there on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. One piece of the puzzle remains, fixing the Boulevard. This plan represents a continuation of the commitment that this council made to the citizens of Thousand Oaks some 20 years ago, when it committed the equivalent of $130 million in the Civic Arts Plaza. That was the beginning. That was the beginning, but more needs to be done. Winston Churchill once said, "Give us the tools, and we'll finish the job." This specific plan contains the tools that Thousand Oaks needs to finish the job. This plan represents the desires of thousands of people in the city of Thousand Oaks who have consistently answered in attitude survey after attitude survey that their desire is to fix the Boulevard. In fact, in survey after survey, the respondents say redevelopment of the Boulevard is one of their top priorities. From a logistics standpoint, this plan covers only the properties along Thousand Oaks Boulevard between Moore Park Road and Duesenberg Drive. It does not include the Thousand Oaks Auto Mall, for example. Development of the Boulevard has been started and stopped many, many times over the years. One of the consistencies is some of us have been working on this for 19 years. You've often heard the phrase, uttered many times by the mayor each year, "The stars are aligned," but for various reasons, the celestial plan never got off the ground. Finally, about six years ago, the city allowed for the creation of a Business Improvement District along the Boulevard. This was formed by approximately 200 property owners along Thousand Oaks Boulevard who decided to assess themselves an amount every year that was put into a pool and used to pay for, among other things, the creation of the Boulevard's specific plan by RRM Design. As you no doubt, as no doubt many of you know, RRM Design is a widely respected design and architectural group that has created dozens of beautiful living spaces and places for people to gather throughout Southern California. Eric Justison, President and CEO of RRM, is here with us tonight. Less than five years ago, Toba prepared a long-term vision for the future of Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Please remember tonight, this vision was adopted by the City of Thousand Oaks City Council in November of 2006. The contradiction in the land use policies along the Boulevard would make Lewis Carroll's Alice in Wonderland seem logical by comparison. One must drive up and down the Boulevard and shake one's head at some of the uses allowed in what is supposed to be the premier street in the city. The specific plan unifies the city codes and creates a unique and identifiable commercial corridor for Thousand Oaks that is economically viable, self-sustainable, and more importantly than anything else, pedestrian-friendly. For those of us who have already had teenagers grow up here, and some of us who are in the process of that right now, you'll be hearing what we've heard for 25 and 30 years. There's no place for us to go here. There is no "there, there." The feature of the plan includes many of the amenities one is used to seeing in cities with a thriving, vibrant downtown area. People will want to come to Thousand Oaks Boulevard because there will be something to do, a variety of entertainment and shopping choices, and our citizens deserve that. We have been having leakage to other cities far too long. Let's get some of those dollars back. It'll be a visually interesting place. I promise not to dwell on the negative. We can answer questions later. But the notion that the Boulevard will be riddled with skyscrapers is a product of a very vivid imagination. We will explain in detail tonight why that won't happen. The specific plan is consistent with the elements of the city's general plan, which promotes a balance of living, shopping, education, cultural, and recreational needs that foster a sense of community living and actually increase citizen engagement with their community. Drawing to a conclusion, let me address another misconception. This plan will not take place overnight. There is not one developer out there licking their chops with a bulldozer ready to start a project the day after this plan is approved. This is a set of guidelines to guide future development, not a specific plan for a specific project. You, the members of our planning commission, and our city council will retain the right to review each individual project as it comes up for approval. And finally, one more misconception to address. This plan does not force in any way, shape, or form a property owner to change. If the property owner likes things the way they are, then they can keep things as they are. But if one wants to change in order to grow their business, the specific plan makes it a lot easier and will make more sense in accomplishing that. This specific plan meets directly our city council's vision and repeated survey confirmation of our community's desire. You will see tonight that we took your comments and concerns made at the joint study session to heart, and with the city staff's help and guidance, addressed your concerns directly, thus earning the recommendation from staff for your approval tonight. Thank you for your time.
Questions, Mr. Lemo? No questions? Thank you, Mr. Lemo. Next, Tim Gallagher.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission, staff. I'm Eric Justison with RRM Design Group. I'm going to take Tim's, a couple of comment minutes there. I've had the pleasure of working along with your staff and with Toba for the past several years and helping them put together the draft plan that you have in front of you. And I think probably the best, the best presentation I could offer you is perhaps some perspective from a planning firm that works across the state. Our planning company, RRM Design Group, is headquartered in San Luis Obispo, of all places, but has offices throughout the state. And we work constantly with various municipalities, cities, counties, special districts, and the like, preparing plans just like this. We've prepared dozens and dozens of specific plans that are seeking to, over time, gradually set a new direction for an area that can improve the lifestyle, the quality of life for its residents and business owners, that both improve the economic conditions and the enjoyment of their town. And in the situation for Thousand Oaks, I was born and raised in Calabasas, and from my youth, remember TO Boulevard having, you know, quite a story of transition. And it's certainly been a long time that the city has been after methods to reasonably improve the Boulevard, create a partnership between the businesses and the city to, over time, improve the "there, there," and establish a center to the city that doesn't quite exist. Where we started was with your vision. We felt that the city and Toba had constructed a very clear vision of what they would like to see. And if you look at that on pages 37 through 41 of your specific plan document, you'll notice that the plan addresses every single point that you were seeking to achieve. And we've done it in a way that takes the best from what we have available in current planning and urban design trends and puts it to work in a customized way for you, recognizing that no community is the same. We've used the principles of introducing a mix of uses to support a more lively street scene. And as Commissioner Ferris noted, there's probably not enough residential right now, but that's because we are working under the, sort of, the guidelines of Mejere. And I suspect at some point in the future, he'll be called upon to address, you know, perhaps looking at what the constraints that Mejere has offered you. But at this point, at least going forward, we have at least a start with some residential that can be offered up. The plan is creative, but it's really very realistic. We know that the lion's share of improvement on the Boulevard will fall to the private property owners and investors that make those improvements, and we'll be working collaboratively with the city to create wider sidewalks, street furnishings, plazas, percent for art, places for people to sit outdoor and dine, and more parking so that patrons can park once, shop, and be entertained in multiple areas. So the plan is filled with strategies that we have seen successful in communities across California of similar size, both here in the central part of California and Northern and Southern California. So I would like to say that this was truly collaborative. I think this is, plan has gotten a lot further down the road with some critical thinking by both the city, yourselves, and Toba, and we urge you to support the staff recommendation. We make our studies available tonight to answer any of the questions you have. It is quite technical. There are a lot of issues to be resolved here or looked at, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Questions of the speaker? No? Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to public speakers. I have five speaker cards. Each person will get five minutes. We'll start with Marty Williams, followed by Valerie Hopkins. Ms. Williams, please state your name, city of residence, for the record.
My name is Marty Williams, and I live in Thousand Oaks. Do you want my street address?
Just city of residence.
All right, I live in Thousand Oaks. And I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight. My husband and I and our family have lived in Thousand Oaks in the Canale Valley since 1968. And what brings me here tonight is to strongly oppose this environmental impact report, number 327, the adopting of Thousand Oaks Boulevard's specific plans, which would establish new development and design guidelines for properties within the planned boundaries that the Redevelopment Agency has set. Please do not pass this. The City of Thousand Oaks established the Redevelopment Agency in 1971. It has helped organizations, like many mansions, to build apartment complexes for low-income families. And throughout the years, no one has objected to the cause of this agency. The Redevelopment Agency is funded by the property taxes that the city collects and keeps on each project that is built with redevelopment monies. These are taxes that are being denied to our schools, police, and fire departments. The city has collected millions upon millions of our tax dollars over the last 40 years. But this time, the City of Thousand Oaks and the Redevelopment Agency has carried this a little bit too far. The city council, planning department, and whoever else is involved in the fault that has allowed the United Nations Agenda 21 to be woven into the general plan, and not only in the redevelopment district, but all over the city. In the last year, we have seen the city take traffic lanes and turn them into bike lanes. The Redevelopment Agency and the City of Thousand Oaks are not telling the people the truth as to what is behind the new design guidelines. Most people have never heard of the United Nations Agenda 21, or ICLEI initials, I-C-L-E-I, which stands for International Council on Local Environment Initiatives. The City of Thousand Oaks has paid a membership fee with our tax dollars to ICLE. ICLE can now dictate the United Nations Agenda Master Plan. ICLE is a non-government organization, and they are now being allowed to set our policies. Sustainable development, or smart growth, are terms that are used to integrate economic, social equity, and environmental policies in order to reduce consumption. Redevelopment Agencies is the only agency in government that can float a bond without a vote of the people. And within the Redevelopment Agencies, cities have the right to take property by eminent domain, which could be a financial loss to property owners. Therefore, I strongly object to the passage of this EIR number 327. And please, do not let this happen, and do not pass this. Thank you very much.
Questions of the speaker? Thank you, Ms. Williams. Valerie Hopkins, followed by Mary Freed.
My name is Valerie Hopkins. I have also been a Canale Valley resident since 1968, and I think I kind of grew up with the town. Because I have lived here for so long, I have watched with interest and awe of all the things that have taken place. But one thing that keeps coming back to me, listening to these conversations, listening to the presentations, is the cost involved in this. I have been a homeowner since 1968, and all I can see is the aspect of property taxes going up, city expenditures going up. When we talk about redeveloping, not only are we talking about our 200 business people who have businesses on Thousand Oaks Boulevard being affected, but we're also talking about the general resident of Thousand Oaks being affected. When we talk about redevelopment funds, let's talk about where the funds come from. Let's talk about what the city's role is in providing changes and what the business owner's responsibility is in providing changes. I remember when our first three-story building went up. It was the Bank of America on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. It's still there, but it's not Bank of America. And you know what? We had to get a new fire truck because we didn't have a single fire truck in the Canale Valley that would go up three stories. Now, this was the old-fashioned three stories, not, you know, 25 feet per story. That was something that we needed to do. That was something that was done. But I look back on a lot of these other things, and I see, you know, $200,000 for this, $200,000 for that, $1 million for this, $1 million for that. You know, our community has been incredibly affected by job loss. We have people who are barely hanging on, and in many cases, our own children are affected with job loss. And those of us who are retired and didn't think this was going to happen are helping to support our children. So when we talk about redevelopment, when we talk about development, let's get down to the basics and talk about cost. I thank you very much for listening, for your time.
Questions of the speaker? Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Mary Freed, followed by Susan Klein.
I'm Mary Freed. I have also lived in Thousand Oaks since 1970. But I'm really pleased with a lot of the aspects of this plan. I had concerns when I spoke last time about some of the trees and the landscaping that was proposed and the changes that have been made are really, really good. They're wonderful trees. I have one of those Chinese pistachios, and it doesn't buckle the sidewalks at all, and it's beautiful all seasons. The thing that I'm most concerned about is the transit study that has been proposed. It says a transit study should be conducted to see if our existing transit is adequate. And you and I know that it's not adequate to take shoppers up and down the Boulevard from the one parking garage that we have now here at City Hall or the parking lot behind the lakes. Those are the only big parking things we have now. So my concerns would be that we need additional public parking places, and I'd love to see a trolley that goes between the Promenade and the Jansen Oaks malls that goes all the way and takes people up and down. There are a lot of seniors that now live along the Boulevard, and they're losing their cars and their driving privileges, and our dial-a-ride doesn't provide for everybody to go when you want to go to lunch, or you want to go to Trader Joe's or Ralph's to shop. So I think we need some kind of good transportation all the time. I live, we have property on Canale School Road, and I was very sad at first when the, I forget what they advertised, you know, some kind of high-end apart, luxury apartments that went in on the corner at Los Feliz. And they are four-story in the back, if you recall, but on the front, we see two and then three stories. So it used the kind of setbacks that were being described tonight. And we do have a son... And we do have a son who lives in town. And for anybody who has children that they would like to keep in the area so they can see their grandchildren regularly, we're going to need some more housing. And I see this as a good way to do that, to keep our young people in town. But we're going to have to do a better job with transit and a better job with parking than I see in the plan. But I'm very encouraged. Thank you.
Questions of the speaker? Thank you, Ms. Freed. Susan Klein, followed by Sam Manfredi.
Hi, I'm Susan Klein. I live in Thousand Oaks. I'm with People Protecting Freedom, and thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. The cruelty of Thousand Oaks Boulevard's specific plan and the inadequacy of the environmental impact report. One of the main, even principal, objectives of the sustainability plan for Thousand Oaks Boulevard is to remove people from the surrounding land, from their land, their psychic and emotional cord binding them to their place. They will feel without roots or true homes and abandoned by the larger civil society, dispossessed for the open space benefit to wild animals, and low carbon emissions, devalued in the eyes of a ruling government, made feral by forces beyond their control, by the EPA and the UN-inspired city planners and friends of the earth. When they are leveled, they will surely become depressed or angry, then having lost their moral bond of property attaching them to their civil society. Some may even act in retaliation for the cruelty they suffer. But you say, "It's merely a few thousand poor souls living in the center of our town." They will be submissive because they have, many of them have rent subsidies. And police can always take control, maybe. There are obscure, even unpredictable consequences the EIR does not address. Don't be guiled by the pretty plans of urban cityscapes. Here is what the larger blueprint for sustainability is all about. It is to reduce the population by force, remove people from the land by regulation, gather them together in high-density enclaves to live like bees in a hive and make them poorer. Is that what you want to begin here? Do you want to set an example of tyranny and cruelty? Allow me to tell you a story that will be instructive. In 1763, while America was still a colonial outpost of Britain, William Pitt the Elder argued for the colonies and against the king for the rights of the colonists. He said, speaking of an American, "The poorest man may in his cottage bid defiance to all force of the crown. It may be frail, its roof may shake, the wind may blow through it, the storms may enter, the rain may enter, but the King of England cannot enter." In America, the glory of the free spirit of the people must be preserved, and the city planner must not enter.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Sam Manfredi, and last speaker, Tim Gallagher.
Yes, my name is Sam Manfredi. My wife and I have been residents out here about 28 years. We have five family members that live here in Thousand Oaks. They all have homes. And we have over six commercial properties on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The Business Improvement District, as you know, assessed every one of our properties for whatever it's been, four or five years, and we've paid the assessment every single year. And having paid those assessments and therefore carefully watched the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association and its members, I've been fully impressed. They've talked with myself repeatedly, they've talked with my tenants. And the plan that they've come up with, which has taken a long time and a lot of hours, is a very good plan. We have over 25 tenants on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. They're small businesses. None of them are large businesses. There's no chains, there's no national companies. They're small people. And I've discussed this with my tenants, and they've all said the same thing. If it creates traffic, if it creates business, it's good for them. And this is the heart of Thousand Oaks. I've developed properties from ground up, and I've remodeled properties here in Thousand Oaks. I've worked with the staff, especially Hater, many times over the years. And I can tell you that the city of Thousand Oaks has been absolutely wonderful in developing properties and helping me restore them. We don't have a lot of big properties. Most of them are small properties. And many times when I've dealt with the city, the problem that I've had is that the city has not had the flexibility it needs. They agree with things that I want to do, they agree that it would be better for the businesses, they agree the building would look better, but they say, gee, our code doesn't allow it. So over the years, with the specific plan, I've talked to the city people, as we've done buildings and everything else, and they said the specific plan would allow certain improvements. This is something that the city needs. I have three children, all in their 20s, and I absolutely hate the fact that they leave Thousand Oaks for their entertainment. So at this point, I am fully behind this plan. And I think we owe a great debt to the people that finally took the bull by the horns and spent the time and the energy. And I'm not going to try to name them all, but I know that I've worked with Mr. Lemo and Mr. Prinsby, and I know they put a lot of time in, and I appreciate it very much. Any questions?
Questions? Mr. Commissioner Ferris.
Just a really quick one. Through what you were talking about, you said that the businesses, they want traffic. I'm assuming it's customer traffic? They're looking for people coming in and out of the store?
They want people to come into their stores. And they want the stores to be more visible. I have buildings that are set back from the Boulevard. I have buildings that sit right on the street. I can tell you from a leasing standpoint, it is at least twice as hard to lease the stores that are set back versus the ones that are on the sidewalk. They want all kinds of traffic. They want vehicular traffic, people driving by and seeing in their stores. They want pedestrian traffic, all right? And they need the business. And if you look at the vacancies on this Boulevard right now, a lot of it's the economy, a lot of it's the way the Boulevard is. And I made my money. I have a business on the Boulevard. I made my money in Thousand Oaks. I didn't inherit it. I made it here, and I invested it here. And sometimes I drive this Boulevard at night, and I go up and down it, and I just shake my head. And I look, and I just see the things that haven't happened in this city that I thought would happen over the last 20 years that I've been buying property. So I'm fully in support of this plan. Thank you.
Additional questions? Thank you, sir. Last speaker, Tim Gallagher.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tim Gallagher. I live in Somus, often referred to as the Switzerland of Ventura County, right in the middle there. But my business, Gallagher 2020 Public Relations, is based here in the Cano Valley. A little over a year ago, members of the bid in Toba asked me to help them join them in a public relations effort to develop the major messages of the specific plan and to conduct outreach for those. The major points are pretty simple. The people want this, the property owners have paid for the plan, the property owners are going to pay for the improvements, and the citizens and the property owners are going to benefit. It's a pretty simple story to tell, and we've told it many, many times over the last year, year and a half. Been very transparent about that. We've appeared before civic organizations, service clubs, neighborhood groups. We've made outreach to the Ventura County Transportation Commission, to the Ventura County Taxpayers Association, talked to all the city councilors, talked to the city council candidates during the last election. We've developed our website. We've passed out about 10,000 brochures about the plan. Our meetings have been open. They've been reported to the press. In fact, if the press doesn't come to our meetings, I call them and tell them what happened. And we've met with the editorial boards of the newspapers and received a recommendation from the Ventura County Star on this plan. My only point in appearing before you tonight was to assure you that our process has been very transparent, and our outreach has been extensive. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Okay, we'll go back to staff for follow-up of any of the public speakers.
Yes, Mr. Chair, excuse me. Just a brief explanation of the redevelopment agency and its process. When the redevelopment agency established, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard redevelopment area, the property tax base at that time was frozen at that level. Any additional property taxes within that boundary, beyond the frozen, come back to the redevelopment agency for public improvements. That money is used two ways. One of them, 20% of that money is set aside for affordable housing within the community. It could be inside the redevelopment agency, it could be outside the redevelopment agency. The remaining is paid for the debt that the agencies issue bonds for, and the others is used for capital improvement projects. So with this plan, the specific plan, the money to prepare the specific plan is from the property owners taxing themselves to prepare the plan. In the future, with the public improvements, there will be a capital improvements project established, like we had with the first phase of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard streetscape improvement. And the money is coming from the tax increment within the redevelopment agency. And it's only the properties within the redevelopment area, which means the business property owners, commercial property owners, are paying for these improvements. It does not involve any residential properties outside the redevelopment agency. So those property owners are the ones are paying for the improvements within the redevelopment area. And that would be the same case in the future with this project. Additionally, when a new development project comes in, there will be fees assessed to those projects for traffic improvements. So again, they pay it through the tax increments, and eventually they're paid through the traffic mitigation fees when a specific project comes in. So all improvements will be paid for by the property owners within the redevelopment area. Thank you.
Before I go to additional questions, the staff, we received a total of 12 statement cards, eight in favor of the plan, three opposed, and one did not state. Questions of staff? Commissioner Ferris.
Thank you. If, can I ask a question on the traffic intersections that after mitigation would still then be scheduled for a level of, who would be the best person?
Beth Baden.
Okay. I'll wait till she comes down. Hi.
Good evening.
Of the intersections that are, we're scheduling that after mitigation would still be at level of Service D, which intersections are those?
The EIR looked at a couple of different timeframes, one of them being existing plus the project, and then cumulative plus the project. And in the existing plus project condition, there's only one intersection, gosh, I'm sorry. Kind of hard to see. After mitigation, there's one intersection, I believe, that's at a level of Service D. Still not finding it.
Perhaps I could interject here just quickly, perhaps while Ms. Baden is looking at that specific LOS, the five intersections that would be LOSD, if the commission decided to recommend that approach, would be Moore Park and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, Rancho Road, Cano School Road, Skyline Drive, and Hampshire Road.
You said Moore Park, Rancho Road, Cano School Road?
Cano School, Skyline?
Skyline.
Skyline Drive and Hampshire Road.
And Hampshire, okay.
Correct. And just a point of clarification, of those five intersections, which are the five Class 1 intersections from the EIR, where you have this fundamental policy conflict between street widening and related mitigation measures and the desire to create a pedestrian-friendly environment. At two of those intersections, at Rancho Road and at Hampshire, there would still be traffic mitigation to avoid any LOSs below D. Those are the two where you could theoretically under cumulative. And that's important here, is that these are almost all cumulative level impacts. There, widening would be required and would be allowed under this proposed policy to maintain LOS and avoid any Es or Fs. So these are the five Class 1 intersections, but there would be mitigation actually implemented at Rancho and at Hampshire.
But would that bring that from, to a C, or would that bring it?
It, again, it would bring it, if you wanted to recommend LOSD, it would bring it up to a D. The, it's important, though, to note in the environmental impact report that there are mitigation measures to maintain LOSC, which is the city standard, at all the intersections. So that's not the problem. Technically, it can be done. And yet, we also do have a general plan policy which allows the council ultimately to allow lower LOS at certain locations due to specific factors such as landscaping and aesthetics. So it's clearly a policy issue. You really, I mean, one way to look at it is you sort of have three options. You could go with all of the, theoretically, all of the traffic mitigation have LOSC. But it would compromise your pedestrian environment. On the other hand, you could have no traffic mitigation, and you'd have this ideal ped environment theoretically, but you'd have LOS down to F at Hampshire. So what staff is recommending that the commission consider is basically sort of a hybrid, a balanced approach, to consider LOSD, to avoid those Es and Fs, but still allow most of the pedestrian-friendly improvements to also be made.
Right. And I just wanted to get an understanding, which, so the premise is that they would be at D, or some of them would be at D, they would all have the pedestrian-friendly bulbouts and things that are kind of being proposed. I think if I remember right, the study session, it was indicated that you could in fact get it to C, but you'd have to give up on some of the bulbouts. So that's,
Correct.
There is in fact, I mean, we're in a position where we cannot in fact have it both ways if the number of units and the additional amount of square footage is approved as recommended.
That's correct. You cannot have it both ways. You can have it either way or a hybrid, but not both.
Right. So were you able to find which of the intersections that would be recommending that if we kept all the pedestrian-friendly environments would then still be at D?
The revised specific plan actually has a revised set of locations for the pedestrian nodes in particular, but there are other pedestrian amenities that would remain as per the original specific plan. In the existing plus project scenario, the one intersection that would require mitigation is Hampshire at Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And in the build-out scenario, there are several others that, let's see, Moore Park at Hillcrest, which is actually outside of the specific plan area. Moore Park at Thousand Oaks Boulevard is at a, would be at a D, would not require mitigation. Rancho at TO would require mitigation. Hampshire at Thousand Oaks Boulevard, again, would require mitigation. And Westlake Boulevard at Thousand Oaks Boulevard, although it's outside the specific plan area, would require mitigation to remain at a level of Service D.
But they're certainly impacted by the approval here, and that's the reason why it would be impacted.
And also the build-out of the rest of the general plan.
Okay. Thank you. If I may, I have still a few more comments. I don't know where the commission's going to go with this, so I wanted to bring up a few other things that, first of all, I like a lot of the things that are in here, so I want to make it very clear. I think the flexibility and having those things as the property owners have brought forward, I think are annoying things that they found that they want to do good, but for some reason, the laws don't let them do that. And I think that trying to accommodate those things is a good thing. The Boulevard needs a specific plan to help accommodate those things. I want to try and identify a few minor things that I'd like to see, at least in the commentary, potentially be addressed. I am pleased with the fact I am pleased with the fact that the oak tree protections are back to where they were. I had heard over, through some conversation, it might have been a typo, who knows, doesn't matter. I think that, that we've, we've sort of, you know, sort of identified it, you know, we talked, between the study session and now, we had a case in which we were able to evaluate oak tree protections, and it did seem to work in, in that standpoint. I, I think that, that would still work here. The freeway corridor design guidelines, my preference would be that the, that the properties are still held to that on a project-by-project basis, even though they're inside the specific plan boundary. I'm not quite sure how it's actually going to be implemented in that case, but can you help me with that?
Yes. Part of the freeway corridor design guidelines is the design, the, design standards within that guidelines is already included in the specific plan, with regard to the articulation and kind of the buildings, landscaping, so even though they fall within the 1,000 feet, however, the, the standards within the specific plan, which being augmented more than what the city's architectural design guidelines are, will take care of the freeway corridor design guidelines.
Okay, great. That, that's great. There was a comment from the public about parking, and I did note there are significant reductions in, within the specific plan boundary area, with an understanding that we want to try to promote some sort of parking plan to allow people to potentially publicly park, get out, walk around, do that. My preference would be that that would be a little bit more articulated and specified before things start going. If we're comfortable that things aren't going to get rushed too quickly before we start needing some of these areas for, for public parking, I leave that to the discretion of others. But I, I think clearly there aren't, based on the evaluation, I'm not sure if enough units are going to be in the specific plan boundary area for the pedestrian traffic to be generated internally. There's still going to be need to have people drive into the specific plan boundary area, so we're going to need parking. Reducing the parking requirements doesn't help the need for the parking, we have to figure out somehow to, to be able to do that. So I know it's called out that we need a parking plan, but it would be nice if we accelerate that a bit, just to make sure that we're comfortable with how we're handling it.
Yeah, that's the first study we're going to have to jump on it, if we want to say, right after the adoption of the plan, is to look at the parking management plan. We have studies from other cities, park ones, there's a lot of, a lot of good ideas there. So we're going to be looking at all options out there, public parking lots, lease of, of land for parking structures, again, and lieu, and lieu fees, a lot of options out there. So that's one of, one of the important documents that staff needs to put together, right after the, adoption of the plan.
Okay, thank you. Was mentioned with respect to gateways into the Boulevard. My preference is that they are low-key and low in profile. There was a description of the potential of archways, or potentially something that's at altitude that, that people can look at. I, I think that that goes counter to the design standards that we've had within the city of prominent monument signs. So I, I would like to personally see it specified very clearly that whatever those gateways are, that they are in fact monument, low-profile, and potentially monument signs. Building height, it would be my preference as well, given that you're, we're actually specifying these specific regulations of the specific plan, that it's very clear as to what a building height is in this area. My, my experience in dealing with building heights is that one can in fact jigger the design just a little bit and have the number come out any way you want it. And people looking at the plans see something that's 60 feet, and they're continually convinced that it's really 35 feet, because of the way average maximum height is calculated. It'd be my preference to, that, that's much clearer so that people understand that, so it's, the expectations are set beforehand. I know that's needed for the articulation of the building, and it's beneficial in many cases, but I don't think we want to set ourselves up to where someone comes in and says, but I designed it this way, it comes out meeting the height standards, and it's something that we all clearly say it's too tall. But we don't have that leverage to be able to use that to, to go against a project if, if that comes up later, later down the road.
With the, within 50-feet height, I mean, it can fit three stories or two stories. The idea of having the average is to, again, to create the articulation in it. I don't think it's going to be a tower that's 60 feet, 70 feet higher than, you know, than, so the 50 feet is average, and I understand your comments, but the 65 feet is the max, which with the incentive program, they cannot go higher, no matter what point of the structure, cannot go higher than 65 feet.
That's a max-max, or an average-max?
When they go with the incentive program, maximum 65 feet. But if three-story and 50 feet, there's flexibility there in the design, but if they apply for the incentive program, it's a maximum height.
I think even, even, even more of a rationale on why it needs to be really clearly stated as to what average maximum and actual maximum mean on, on building height.
And again, the idea of average maximum is to allow the variation in the rough plan to create the articulation that's needed for the buildings.
Okay. I'm, like I said, I'm mentioning these things because, like I said, I don't know where, where it's ultimately going. I'd like them at least as part of the discussion, so, thanks.
Other question? Commissioner Tappel?
Yes, real quick, and I, I'm pretty sure I already know the answers, because these are very, very simple questions. Actually, the, the height issue that Commissioner Ferris was just talking about, all those cases come back before us, before any project is approved. So all that gets to be revisited at that time, is that correct?
Only, only a project that's asking for fourth floor.
Understand, okay. And the, the, I brought this up at the joint session, because I'm, I'm looking, and I don't know if this is totally in stone, because you said you were going to have to do the, first thing you were going to have to do was the traffic study, was a major piece that, if this gets approved by the council and by the commission.
You mean parking?
Are, are we committed to the parallel parking, or is the angled parking still going to be a part of that process?
Well, right now it's parallel parking on the Boulevard. Again, in, in my presentation, if there's a physical constraint on the site, that they cannot bring the building closer to the sidewalk because of the flood control channel and the easement, which is mostly 30-foot easement, then they could, if, if it's feasible and safe, to put the angled parking instead of a landscaped area. Because adding landscaped area in the front will break up the pedestrian feel to the Boulevard. But if you put angled parking, there's still that activity of, of something going on on the Boulevard. So that's the, that's where the angled parking comes in, but the majority of on-street parking will be parallel as existing right now.
Okay. And the, there was one more, or a couple more actually. I, I was thinking about it with the state mandate that we have for affordable housing, would the mixed-use development be able to be applied to that at all, or?
Again, depending on the developer, if the developer comes in, says I want to build affordable housing, and he asks for the assistance of the redevelopment agency, we'll, we'll sit down with them, discuss their project, and see what kind of gap they'd have financially, and if that works out, we'll definitely help them.
Okay. And then the only other thing, and maybe Mr. Town would want to answer this, when we're talking about going from level of service C to position of level of service D, I thought I remembered reading somewhere that that was only at certain times of the day, like around, yeah?
That's correct. Almost all of the level of services that drop below a C occur in the PM peak hour. There's only, I believe, one intersection where it occurs, where it would occur at the AM peak hour. It's all PM, and except for two intersections, it's all cumulative. And by cumulative, it's important that everybody understand that that would occur after general plan build-out, that is, build-out of parcels under the current general plan standards, as well as what we talked about before, the specific plan additional, which is that additional density, that one would see that additional 25% through the specific plan. And cumulative includes what we call related projects, in other words, those are actually mapped out in, in volume two of the EIR, which looked at projects in the vicinity of the specific plan but outside the boundaries. So when we talk about these, these level of service issues, that's in 90% plus of the time happening in cumulative, assuming full build-out of those three components. So it probably won't happen for years to, to be direct, but it is something that we always look at, we always look at project-level impacts and cumulative, and, and that's where most of these impacts occur.
But it's not like that, you're going to have a, a lower level of service all day long at those intersections.
That is correct. It's almost always in the PM peak hour.
Good.
Other questions? Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. Who is going to oversee the public art?
Again, that's one of the programs that we have to set up after the adoption of the plan. We're going to have to come up with a program between us and Toba, who's going to manage that, and how it's going to work out. So again, there's several studies and programs in the specific plan that needs to be taken, we need to put together after the adoption of the plan.
Okay, and I would hope that I would, that it would be in the streetscape, and I mean, I, I guess, I'm just not one to see modern art sculptures all over the Boulevard, that I hope that it would be incorporated in many different ways throughout the Boulevard, so.
Other questions? Commissioner Ferris?
I, I did want to ask some things, Mr. Burgess, regarding the EIR. I, I do, I do feel I want to ask, I should ask these questions before, before we close the hearing. It is mentioned that, in the staff's opinion, that the application of the commercial residential designation and the development of the particular standards that, that would be, that would go along with that would not be considered a growth-inducing impact because it's not precedent-setting. Do, I, I'd like to get a clearer understanding of, as to why that, that evaluation.
Well, it's not precedent-setting, I think, because it is within the confines of the specific plan, it's not something being applied throughout the city, it's just within that area.
Would it not, though, set a potential example for how the commercial residential designation could be applied, and that certain standards for mixed use could be applied on, say, more compact, compatible areas through the city, to be able to say this could in fact be done because we've allowed mixed use?
Well, again, I don't think those, the mixed use would be allowed in any area but the specific plan area. You're saying areas outside the specific plan area? I think that's what you're asking.
Well, the, one of the evaluations is, does the actions that we're taking here provide a growth-inducing effect because they are in fact precedent-setting? And the premise, I mean, that's one of the criteria. And the, and there's like three others, and they, they certainly don't apply based on what I've read. But this does seem to set an example for how other future development could in fact be approved within the city by setting a general plan designation and appropriate development standards within that. It, I'm just kind of wondering, are we saying, well, it's in this, it's just within the specific plan, and because this doesn't affect anything except the specific plan, it's not precedent-setting?
Well, that's my understanding, but others may have additional comments here.
Can I, can I, can I add to it?
Yeah, sure.
Again, yeah, the commercial residential designation will be only within the specific plan boundary. Let's say Newbury Road or Moore Park Road, property owners get together, say, I want a, I want a specific plan, like the one you have to your Boulevard. So they need to come up with their own plan to the city. This residential/commercial would not apply anywhere else in the city, because there is no designation anywhere in the city that has that designation. And it's only within this boundary here.
Right, but they could apply for a general plan designation for that, right?
It has to be part of an overall specific plan. Residential slash commercial can only be accomplished with a specific plan. It cannot go by itself. It has to be part of a specific plan.
Why is that?
That's in the general plan. That's currently in the general plan.
So they could come up with their own specific plan with the arguably identical standards that are in this specific plan, correct?
If they want to go through the process and hire consultants, it's, I mean, it's just like what Toba did. So they could have, they have the right to do that, and of course, the city council and the commission and staff will evaluate that in the future.
Okay, I mean, that's helpful. I appreciate that. I guess, one other question would be, I do have, and I express a little concern over the evaluation of how only 375 units would, would be, are projected for build-out, what if it happens to be more than that? This is very, this is, this is a quite large area of which we're designating things that we're saying, if they are to be residential, they must be developed at minimum 10 acre, 10 units per acre. How do we know that it wouldn't be 500 more units? Or 700 more units?
Yeah, the, the residential units, again, based on the formula we use, we came up with 375 max. If the 214 used up, and let's assume there's additional units outside, that council will authorize to meet the 375. So here we are, 375 projected in the specific plan is met, and somebody else want to have more residential units, then we need to go through the general plan amendment process.
Well, that, that taps on another issue as to general plan amendment process, because that, is my understanding, the general plan has already been amended by that point.
But the general plan sets limits on how many residential units could be have in the specific plan, which is 375. If you exceed that number, then you need to go through the vote of the public, because that's another process, unless the council authorized, from the citywide bank, authorized more units to be used.
But again, it's a general plan amendment that is subject to voter approval, not the specific plan.
Correct, the future, specific plan, future.
It's not the specific plan.
Correct.
It's the general.
But the general plan sets the limit of the, if the, under measure E.
Let's say, let's say we're 15 years out, and now measure E's expired, and we didn't renew it. Can more units be built?
If somebody files in general plan amendment, yes.
The general plan amendment, why, I'm, I still don't understand why a general plan amendment needs to be.
And could be a specific plan amendment, we need to legally, if that's required, because we set a maximum under both, the general plan amendment and the specific plan of 375 units.
We're not, we're not, we're not, are we actually setting a maximum within the specific plan? We're just saying we project that that's what we think will be built.
Projected, correct. Projected under the, the development standards.
The reason why I asked the question is that that's what we're evaluating the environmental impacts based on. What if it's more?
Then it would be evaluated again based on the specific project.
So is this EIR adequate in evaluating a higher intensity?
No.
Mr. Norman, you want to jump in here?
Yeah, I mean, technically, the 375 is not a, is not a limit. So technically, someone hypothetically down the road could come in with dense enough projects to exceed that 375. The purpose of the EIR is to give you adequate information to look at the environmental impact, and what staff has tried to do is give you its best estimate as to what the likely build-outs are going to be. They could be more. And if there's a project down the line that exceeds that, there would have to be an environmental review of that, and at that time, the environmental impact from those excessive units would be evaluated. That's how it would work.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Lemo or Principay, do you have, you have five-minute rebuttal time? Anything you want to add? Okay. We will close the public hearing and open to commission discussion. Just want to remind everyone that this is a recommendation to the city council, so if you have recommendations that you may want them to consider or look at, now's the time. Okay, yeah, we would have to have consensus, if we have recommendations, it's consensus of the commission. Commissioner Reynolds?
I'll start the discussion. I've lived here 40 years, and I've been waiting to see some improvements on the Boulevard. While they're new buildings, I real, and we have approved additional buildings that have not been built yet, I really think that our Boulevard should be pedestrian-friendly. It's not the kind of Boulevard right now that you would take a trolley to go to the auto parts store. I, I always have felt that our Boulevard is a very masculine Boulevard, it's not one that, with boutiques. It's not like Santa Barbara, and our city isn't like Santa Barbara, but I know people would like it to be that way. But I think with this specific plan, and with the plans that the Boulevard Association has, that maybe eventually it will be that kind of Boulevard. And people will be encouraged once they see the pedestrian-friendly with the sitting areas and with the different, the different types of architecture on the Boulevard, that people will want to come. They say, if you build it, they will come. And I really believe that that's what will happen. We're not going to see this done within five, 10 years. I think it's going to be a long-range plan, but I'm very pleased with the report that's been done. I'm concerned with the level D, the traffic, that's always been a concern of mine, but I think that this is an extremely good start. I'm I'm very pleased that staff did explain about redevelopment. I think there is misinformation out there that's going on, and our community needs to be made aware of really what happens with redevelopment funds and everything. I'll let the other commissioners discuss before I make a, or if somebody else wants to make a motion, so.
Commissioner Price.
Thank you. After our June study session, there was some discussion in regards to the 2009 Community Attitude Survey that was taken and not taken into consideration when this document was prepared. And I understand the reasons for it, that the document was prepared before that survey was completed. But now, having taken a look at that survey here just today, and noting that 70% of the public was in favor of some revitalization of the Boulevard, and that that number even increased up to 77%, once they knew more of the specifics, and that it was gonna help the economy here in the city, that made me certainly a lot more comfortable with the whole idea. It's obvious to me now that the majority of our residents are certainly in favor of it. I also had some concerns about the trees, the oak tree protections that were seemingly going to be abolished, or chopped off at the knees, if you will. But that has been remedied in, in the revision. I still have some apprehension over the building heights. I do have to say that. I, I understand the 50-foot average, but I know that, that anything above and beyond that 50 feet will be coming back to the Planning Commission for their review. So any building that, or any developer who were able to amass enough credits to build a fourth story onto a building, that project would come back to the Planning Commission, which, that gives me a great deal of comfort there. However, having said that, I still have some apprehension about the height, the overall height, and the average height being at 50 feet. It's a bit of a departure from what, what the city is used to, and I think, there was actually a question in that 2009 Attitude Survey that, that asked that specific question, how many, what percentage of people would be in, or what percentage of people were in favor of buildings three stories and then four stories? And I wish I could remember those percentages. I can't. I, I think that they were in the area of, for three stories, I think it was in the area of 47%, and it may have gone down just a little bit when they were talking about four-story buildings. So, I just want to mention those, because it's something that I think we need to consider when reaching an agreement here, voting on this. Thank you.
Commissioner Ferris, anything?
Sure. If you want, I have those figures for you. I, I happen to know them. It, it is important to know, this is the reason why I think it's important, we have these discussions, we're all coming from different perspectives, and we need to be able to see it all from, from a variety of angles. The 2009 survey, here is the question that people were asked, and it's a note to, to note how it was asked and what was presented to them. "City of Thousand Oaks is considering working with property owners to redevelop portions of Thousand Oaks Boulevard to improve the infrastructure and appearance of the area, as well as make it a pedestrian-friendly environment. In general, would you favor or oppose redeveloping portions of Thousand Oaks Boulevard?" Of that, 70% said they were in favor. They talk about the economic benefits, and it does go up to 77. The challenge is, if you look at that, it's a very positive question in nature, so people would say, do you want to improve the infrastructure? Sure. You want to improve the appearance? Absolutely. The question is, is that, do they want that with what the costs would be? And some of those are the increased building height, and in 2009, no questions about traffic impacts relating to that were asked of people. In fact, the questions regarding mixed use were, in relation to Thousand Oaks Boulevard, 50.7% opposed mixed-use development, 51.3 opposed four-story buildings, 66.1 opposed five-story buildings. And the, what I don't, what we don't know is, if we got those pedestrian-friendly things and we improved the appearance, but they knew that certain intersections in Thousand Oaks, on Thousand Oaks Boulevard and surrounding that would be at a Level of Service D, would they still approve the revital, the plan to revitalize the Boulevard? We don't know the answer to that question. If you look at the 2009 survey, there are figures which indicate, and again, I mentioned this, in general, people are very happy and satisfied with, with how things are in Thousand Oaks. But the two issues to where they, the most dissatisfaction was expressed were in managing growth and development, and managing traffic congestion in the city. Third one, by the way, was promoting economic development. But that was also asked in relation to, what else would you like to see? And some people would like to see more restaurants, specifically Olive Garden and Red Lobster, which, those of you who know, I think they're coming in the fall at, at the Oaks Mall. So, so some of those things actually have been addressed and, you know, are being taken care of, not necessarily on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. But in the 2004 survey, they asked, and it was, I think it's actually in the specific plan, there's a, there's a snip out of that, 50 point, 59.5% considered having Thousand Oaks Boulevard as a through-street with synchronized signals and free-flowing traffic speeds is very important, and 29.9 is somewhat important. So nearly 90% of the people want Thousand Oaks Boulevard to have free-flowing traffic speeds. Level of Service D at PM, when people are coming home, and they're gonna be traveling through the Boulevard, they will be impacted by that additional traffic. So, the things I keep looking at are, there are things like flexibility and kinda pushing the buildings up closer to the Boulevard and things that seem completely the absolute right thing to do, to help revitalize things and, and do that. Having a parking plan to encourage people to come in and park and walk around, I think, is good. The question is, is that, is the amount of intensity that we would be allowing through these standards too much of a price to pay for doing that? And is there, is there somewhere that we can actually come and, and provide those opportunities to help to redevelop it without having all that additional intensity? I'm, I believe there is, but I'm not quite sure this plan as proposed, even though it was brought down, as Mr. Lemo mentioned, they did address things from the study session. But it's the Planning Commission hearings and the public hearings in which we have the full review of the environmental documents, which we did not have that time, and we were still in the middle of the public review period, if I remember right. So, I, I believe there's more that, that could be done to, to have something that, that we all, we all can get behind. Just, for me, especially the Measure E impact, I'm, I'm very, very concerned over the Pandora's box that, that could be there, if we interpret it the way it's, and I think that is, that is very inconsistent with what the expectations of the voters were when they approved Measure E. And to designate 220 acres, and I mentioned this, this is, I'm, I'm not trying to have a shock value, and I don't even believe this, but 220 acres at the highest density of residential that we're allowing, which is 30 units per acre, means it could, could, not will, not likely, be 6,600 units. Do I believe that that would happen? No, absolutely not. But if it's 600, it's twice as much as being evaluated right now in, in the, in the EIR. And even then, I think that would need to be voter-approved, because it's over what's in the bank. A commercial designation takes industrial, residential, which is 30.7 acres, and designates those for commercial uses. And there's only 10.06 acres left in the bank. That would require voter approval for the general plan amendment. And I think it's an important thing that we, we evaluate and address, because I think this is, this butts up to exactly what Measure E was intended, to have the voters involved in. So, I mentioned that for your consumption.
Commissioner Tripell.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right when you said that we all come from different angles, and that's why these conversations are extremely important. But surveys can actually be very, very misleading, just how you mentioned on how that particular question was phrased. And when you ask the other questions that talk about, would you approve four-story buildings, five-story buildings, six-story buildings, people are thinking like big-box buildings like down in downtown Los Angeles, or the way 223 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard was built. And I, I think that with the information of the way this plan has been designed, all that has been mitigated through architectural guidelines to make it look beautiful, to make it look different. So I'm not so, I'm not really afraid about that. Plus, we have the, the checks and balances that if a developer does want to come in and put up that four stories, or 65 feet, that has to come to us so we get to be able to say yea or nay. And it's the same thing with Measure E, because you brought, I'm really, I was gonna make a note about that earlier, because I kept thinking specific plan, and I didn't see Measure E being triggered, and you brought that up this evening, I'm glad you did, but from what the city attorney says, we still can go to voter approval if, if we go beyond that magic number. So I, I don't think those are things really to be afraid of. The, this thing has been 19 years in the making. You know, we don't have sheep going down the Boulevard anymore. Some people want sheep to go down the Boulevard anymore. My kids would love sheep going down the Boulevard. The, my wife would probably want alpacas going down the Boulevard. I don't know, but things have to change. I've been in this business, this, this city, only 26 years, and the, used to operate the radio stations, I've seen Cano Valley days go through things, I've seen the community change. And I think this is a step in the right direction. Just like when you were talking to Mr. Alawami, the first thing that they're gonna do is take a look and put their teeth into how that traffic is going to impact this, and the parking. And I think that is, is something that has to be looked at. So the, although I really, I, I hear your concerns, I think because of the kinda staff we have here at the city, and the way Toba and staff have worked together over the past few, how long has it been now? Four or five years? Six, alright, six years. Don't get me back to the 15-gallon plants again. The, I, I think it's, it would actually be a good move, and if somebody, you know, made a motion, I would definitely support it. I'll go ahead and do that if you'd like.
Well, before you do that, I'll add my two-and-a-half cents here. Overall, I think this is a great blueprint. Do we have some things that can be tightened up? Absolutely. Commissioner Ferris mentioned low-profile gateways. I agree with that. Building height calculations, agree with Commissioner Price and Ferris, that I think we need a cleaner way of calculating that, so there is no, I don't want to say fudging of numbers, but it is what it is. Traffic levels, that, that's a tough one. Yeah, nobody wants to be stuck in traffic at a Level D, but then again, you know, I was raised in this community and used to bike-ride down Teo Boulevard, there's no way in heck I would bike-ride or even walk down Teo Boulevard at this point. So, that's a, that's a tough balance there. But this is a long-term plan, it isn't gonna be built overnight, and I do have comfort that, you know, it, specific items that we discussed, you know, will have to come back through the Planning Commission. That's why there's five of us up here, same with the City Council, so we do have a check and balance. It's not a perfect plan, but when is it ever a perfect plan? But, all in all, I, I think this is very, very good. So, Commissioner Tripell?
Okay. I want to make sure I get this right. Do we put the EIR together with this? Does it all come in together as one? So let me get the... Hmm? Oh, I forgot. Yeah. Okay, then what I would like to do is, go ahead and move that we approve EI number, EIR number, pardon, to the City Council. Yeah. Send on up to the City Council the approval of the environmental impact report, EIR number 327, and the mitigation monitoring plan to consider adopting the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, establishing new development and design guidelines for properties within the plan boundary, and to consider changing the land use element of the general plan from existing commercial, industrial, medium-density residential and high-density residential, and institutional designations which currently apply within the proposed specific plan boundaries to commercial residential. Did that cover it?
Comments to the motion? Commissioner Ferris?
Yeah. I think, I'm sure based upon my previous comments, you'll know where I'm gonna land on it. I can't support the motion, because I believe that this particular specific plan, I think, there are, I feel, more impacts that have not been adequately analyzed by the EIR. I think that there are, there's, the potential, and again, this is, it is true, this is not gonna happen overnight. This is the long-term plan, and we have to evaluate this at build-out. Will build-out truly only be 375 units when it's all done? I do not believe that that would be the case based upon the designations and the proposed standards that, that we have. I am deeply concerned with the interpretation of Measure E. I think it undermines the intent of what the voters had in mind. This right here is the specific part from the text. It says, "No proposed amendment to the land use element of the city's general plan of the following types shall be effective until it has been considered and approved by the ballot, for the ballot by the City Council, and then submitted to and approved by a majority of city voters at a general or special election." And then it goes into the residential and commercial aspects of it. It's not that voter approval happens on projects later on, it happens on the consideration and approval of the amendment to the general plan. That's what we have in front of us. That's what the City Council will, will be dealing with when it comes to them, and for it to take effect, if it in fact designates more acreage than we have in the bank to commercial, or allows more residential units than we have in the bank to residential, it must be approved by the voters before it takes effect. And for that reason, I can't, I caution very strongly to the commission of approving this recommendation, City Council on, on approving this as interpreted. I, I think there's more work that needs to be done, I think there's something that we can all, who want to see the Boulevard revitalized and not have the significant traffic impacts that would result, to be able to support something like this. But this right here, this is not the plan, unfortunately. Congratulations on the work, it's been a lot of work, and, and there's a lot of really great elements to it. I just would like to see some of the intensity elements and how it's approved changed, but that won't be with this motion, so thank you.
Other comments? Commissioner Reynolds? Nope?
I, I think that I've made all the comments I need to, that I'm supportive of the motion.
Any closing comments? Commissioner Tripell?
None really in particular. I do hear Commissioner Ferris's concerns regarding Measure E. I'm very satisfied with how our city attorney answered that earlier today, that they feel it is a defensible position. So with that, that's all I have to say.
Motion passed, four to one. Commissioner Ferris opposed.
And this will be moved to the City Council for consideration. Item number seven, the Community Development Department reports. Mr. Towne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick note that you will have two hearings before you at your next meeting on October 10th, and that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Minutes of September 12th, 2011. Commissioner Reynolds?
I move approval of the minutes of the meeting of September 12th, 2011.
Vote, please.
Motion passed, four to zero, with Commissioner Ferris abstaining.
AB 1234 reports. Start with Commissioner Price.
Yes, I, along with several other fellow commissioners, attended this year's California League of Cities in San Francisco this past week. I thought it was tremendously enlightening, attended a number of sessions that dealt with issues that are confronting cities throughout the state of California, and I know that going forward, the information that I was able to gather there will be tremendously useful in my service here on the commission, so that is all.
Commissioner Tripell?
Yes, I too attended the League of Cities up in San Francisco, and it was enlightening. I'm not gonna belabor you repeating everything that Commissioner Price just said, but it helped me really understand how staff and, well, how staff has to work with, with all the things that come before them. the things that come before them. And it's a real big juggle.
Commissioner Reynolds?
And I also attended the League of California Cities, enjoyed the different workshops that I sat in. Interesting that we don't have the nightlife, so I didn't have to worry about that, but it was interesting to hear what the cities do have to deal with when there is, when there are a lot of nightclubs and things in their area. And also the sign, talking about signs, and then also the cannabis distributions, so interesting what problems the other cities have that we live in a wonderful, beautiful place and we should be proud of it.
Commissioner Ferris, no report?
Okay, just checking. I too attended the League of California Cities and echo the comments of the fellow commissioners. It's always a, a good, good refreshing look to, you know, understand that other cities and counties are going through the same type of issues. The city's accomplished a lot this year and I know there's a lot to accomplish next year as well. Commission comments?
Commissioner Reynolds?
I just wanted to ask about the meeting on the 24th. That is the Thousand Oaks Police Foundation Golf Tournament that day. And I was wondering if we will be having a meeting or how soon you would let us know if we are not, so we can buy dinner tickets.
We should know within the next two weeks at the outside if we will have a meeting. There's one, one potential case that, that would be placed before you, but we're not certain if that will go on that date.
I would still get your clubs out, Commissioner Reynolds, and get them ready.
I don't play, I just bid.
Any other commission comments? No other comments? Okay, we'll adjourn to 6:30 PM, October 10th, 2011.